Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council for Monday, May 3rd. My name is William Watts, President of Council. I would like to begin tonight's meeting by welcoming our newest council member, Mr. Jeffrey Witten. Mr. Witten has recently been appointed to serve out the remainder of Mr. Allen's term. And Mr. Witten will be serving as the Chairman of the Building Committee. And also will serve on the Community Partnerships Personnel Committee. Will be serving the community as First Board Councilmember. Welcome, Mr. Witten. We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll begin tonight's meeting with an invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mrs. Snead. Please rise.
Tonight, I would like to draw on remarks and an invocation delivered to the Philadelphia City Council by Archbishop Charles Chaput. The Archbishop began, Teddy Roosevelt was a man who had a reputation for being frank and direct. In 1900, a year before he entered the White House, he wrote these words. "It is not enough that a public official should be honest. No amount of honesty will avail if they are not all so brave and wise." The Archbishop continued, "Leadership requires two virtues that seem very simple until they become very inconvenient: honesty and courage. With that comes a duty of humility, integrity, and public service. Let's settle our hearts for just a moment in prayer. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us. And to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your children, confident in your goodness and love. Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Snead. This is Knight. Will you please call the roll?
This is Snead. Here. Mr. Rozell.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Schilling.
Here.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mr. Swazer.
Here.
Mr. Seaver.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Witten.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate your summary of the minutes for the April 19th, 2021 meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, April 19, 2021. Public hearings were held on eight ordinances to have city zonings applied to annexed properties. Committee reports, Building and Utilities Committee recommended a legislation be prepared for a professional services agreement related to the Madison Street Stormwater Lift Stations. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation being prepared regarding participating in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing for Road Salt. Committee also recommended legislation be prepared authorizing and Nature Works Grant Application. Resolution number R152021, Agreement with Strand Associates to Provide Design Services for Madison Street Stormwater Lift Station was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R162021, A Grant Application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for Funding for a Parking Lot Near the Broadford Bridge was given first reading, was discussed, and was adopted. Resolution number R172021, Participating in ODOT Road Salt Contract was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O2121. Zoning of Annex Parcels on Riverside Drive was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number O222021, Annex Zoning of Annex Parcel off of Lidle Road was given public hearing and second reading. Ordecember O232021, Zoning of Annex Parcel at 1103 Washington Road was given public hearing and second reading. Ordecember O242021, Zoning of Annex Parcel at 2900 McKay Road was given second reading and public hearing. Ordecember O252021, Zoning of Annex Parcel at 2765 McKay was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number O262021, Zoning of Annex Parcel at 2811 State Route 718 was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number O272021, Zoning of Annex Parcel Located off Troy Urbana Road was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number O282021, Zoning of Annex Parcel at 554 Staunton Road was given public hearing and second reading. Following comments, Council adjourned at 7:45 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel.
Second.
It's been moved to approval by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Schilling. This is Knight. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Yes. Minutes are approved.
Moving on to committee reports. We have three committee reports this evening. We will begin with the Community and Economic Development Committee and Mrs. Snead.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on April 26th to consider recommendations of the Troy Planning Commission for the rezoning of parcels that have been annexed but have not yet been rezoned to a city zoning classification. Comments were made during the April 19th public hearings regarding two parcels. However, most of the comments can only be addressed if and when a development plan is presented to the city regarding any of the parcels. At this time, a plan has not been submitted for any of the annexed parcels. Taking into account all comments provided and recognizing that the rezonings are only to provide that land within the city has an appropriate city zoning and that a development plan has not been submitted for any parcel. It is the recommendation of this committee that ordinance numbers O212021, O222021, O232021, O242021, O252021, O262021, O272021, O282021 be adopted as recommended by the Troy Planning Commission based on the findings that each proposed rezoning is consistent with the intent and purposes of the City of Troy zoning code. Each proposed rezoning is consistent with the surrounding zoning districts. Each use is consistent with permitted uses in the zoning district of the ordinance. And each proposed rezoning is consistent with the City of Troy comprehensive plan. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snead. Are there any comments or questions on the report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Community Partnerships Committee with Mr. Rozell and two reports this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met April 26th to consider recommendation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy, Ohio, CIC regarding the leasing of the Marina Building. The CIC has recommended that the first of two possible, excuse me, two possible five-year extensions be authorized and that the percentage of gross sales rent be adjusted as discussed in the detailed report. Is the recommendation of this committee, the legislation be prepared, authorized, and directed at public service and safety to enter an amended and restated lease with the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy, Ohio regarding the CIC handling the lease of the Marina Building and surrounding property, not including Treasure Island. The committee supports the legislation being an emergency measure so that the amended and restated lease can be in effect as soon as possible. This is submitted respectfully by John Swazer and myself, William Rozell, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, you can move on to the final report.
Once again, this committee met on April 26th regarding an event in downtown Troy area on June 4th and 5th known as the 2021 Troy Strawberry Jam. This event will be smaller than the typical Troy Strawberry Festival in both venue and vendors. The focus is on music, food, and beverages and allowing local nonprofits to raise funds for community purposes providing an opportunity for residents and visitors to come downtown to enjoy a variety of bands, support local businesses, and support the local nonprofit organizations. This event would include the sale and consumption of beer within an event area. Is recommended, recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorized, and directed at public service and safety to enter an agreement with Detroit Strawberry Festival, Inc., for 2021 Troy Strawberry Jam. Provide for the standard notwithstanding legislation and authorize the sale of beer within the event area. The committee supports this legislation being presented as an emergency measure as the Troy Strawberry Festival Incorporated must submit a application for an F2 permit to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control without delay. This is also respectfully submitted by John Swazer and myself, William Rozell, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll open it up to citizen comments on items on the agenda. We have 10 ordinances for discussion this evening. If you'd like to speak on any of the ordinances, you're invited to come up to the podium, give your name and address, and you have two minutes to address counts. Seeing none, we'll move on. There are no resolutions this evening, but we do have 10 ordinances. Last, Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O212021.
Ordinance number O212021, An Ordinance Changing the Zoning of Annex Parcels on Riverside Drive, Troy, Ohio from city-administered county zoning to the city zoning of R4 Single Family Residential District. This would provide for the rezoning of 16 parcels that are located on Riverside Drive have been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the third reading.
It's been moved to it after ordinance by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mrs. Snead. Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate ordinance O222021.
Ordinance number O222021, An Ordinance Changing the Zoning of Annex Parcel Number DO8106896 in lot 11357 from city-administered county zoning of A2 General Agricultural District to the city zoning of R5 Single Family Residential District. This is located off Lidle Road, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, third reading.
This is Knight. House Counsel, we're back on that.
Second.
It's been moved to not ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate ordinance O232021.
Ordinance number O232021, An Ordinance Changing the Zoning of Annex Parcel Number DO8106898 in lot 11364 from city-administered county zoning of A2 General Agricultural District to the city zoning of R4 Single Family Residential District. This is located 1103 Washington Road, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, third reading.
And Mrs. Knight, House Counsel, we're back on that. The move to it after ordinance by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate ordinance O242021.
Ordinance number O242021, An Ordinance Changing the Zoning of Annex Parcel Number DO8106650 in lot 10899 from city-administered county zoning of R1 AAA One Family Residential District to the city zoning of R3B Single Family Residential District. This is located 2900 McKay, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, third reading.
Thank you, House Counsel, we're back.
Second.
It's been moved without the ordinance by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Swazer. Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver. Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate ordinance O252021.
Ordinance number O252021, An Ordinance Changing the Zoning of Annex Parcel Number DO8106904 in lot 11365 and Annex Parcel Number DO8106906 in lot 11366 from city-administered county zoning of R1 AAA One Family Residential District to the city zoning of R4 Single Family Residential District. This is located 2765 McKay, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, this is the third reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel, we're back. It's been moved without the ordinance by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twist. Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate ordinance O262021.
Ordinance number O6262021, An Ordinance Changing the Zoning of Annex Parcel Number DO8250735 in lot 11367 from city-administered county zoning of A2 General Agricultural District to the city zoning of R4 Single Family Residential District. Property is located at 2811 State Route 718, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, and this is the third reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel, we're back.
Second.
It's been moved to it after ordinance by Mr. Schilling and seconded by Mrs. Snead. Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate ordinance O272021.
Ordinance number O272021, An Ordinance Changing the Zoning of Annex Parcel Numbers K30042400 and K30042407 from city-administered county zoning of A2 General Agricultural District to the city zoning of R3B Single Family Residential District. Properties located off Troy Urbana Road, recommended by the Troy Planning Commission for approval, and this is the third reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel, we're back.
Second.
It's been moved without the ordinance by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Yeah. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yeah.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate ordinance O282021.
Ordinance number O282021, An Ordinance Changing the Zoning of Annex Parcel Number K31250010 from city-administered county zoning to the city zoning of WO Wellhead Operation District. This is a city-owned parcel at 554 Staunton Road, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, this is the third reading.
So it is removed without the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Snead. Yeah. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate ordinance O292021.
Ordinance number O292021, Ordinance Authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to Enter into an Amended and Restated Lease with the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy, Ohio regarding the lease of the Marina Building and declaring an emergency. This would be the first of five-year renewals. This is the first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel. It's been moved to suspend the three-reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mrs. Snead. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Yeah.
It's been moved to without the ordinance by Mrs. Snead, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Yeah. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate the last ordinance for the evening. Ordinance O312021. It is Thursday. I'm sorry. Ordinance O302021.
Ordinance number O302021, Ordinance Authorizing the Use of Public Areas for the 2021 Troy Strawberry Jam notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy Codified Ordinances and further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer subject to the issuance of proper permits by the State of Ohio and procurement of liquor liability insurance and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with the Troy Strawberry Festival, Inc., therefore, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three-reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Yeah. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
The three-reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved without the ordinance by Mrs. Snead, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Any further comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead. Yeah. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
No, just to clarify, for the strawberry jam and the nonprofits not selling of alcohol at the event, so point of mine in my house, not important nonprofits, but.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We'll begin with ordinance number 31 at the next meeting. I don't know what it is. We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out in like two weeks, right? This is Knight. Are there any communications or announcements this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to comments and officials, we'll go for Mayor, Mayor Odom.
Just that tomorrow is an election day and hopeful that people will get out and vote. It's expected to be a low turnout, but would love to see people surprised by a high turnout, so encouraging people to get out and do that. Also, we have a car show Friday night, Troy Main Street, and looking forward to that downtown Troy. Just some fun things to do this weekend.
Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tiftrington.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Tiftrington. Moving on, Director of Law, Mr. Curver.
Likewise, I have nothing to offer this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Curver, and City Auditor, Mr. Friggy.
I would like to welcome Mr. Witten and caution that not all meetings are this quick.
He could be a good love charm.
Thank you. For the wisdom, Mr. Friggy. Councilmembers, Mr. Rozell.
When you do go vote, the First Ward, Mr. Witten's name is not on the ballot, so you will have to write his name in, just a reminder. And indeed, the 25.
Any other council members have any comments? Mr. Seaver.
I'd just say to welcome everyone to the Meet the Candidates, Meet the At-Large Members Meeting will be May 15th here at the Bravo Room at 9:00 AM. We started those probably five years, four or five years ago, something like that. And they're an opportunity for people to come, and if you have any issues that you want to talk about, you can't make a council meeting or you just want to pass something on to council. Mr. Rozell, Mrs. Snead, and myself will be hosting that day, but council members, members of staff, and obviously anyone from the community are welcome. So it'll be same bad place, same bad channel, but a different bad time. So we'll be here May 15th at 9:00 AM.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver.
Donuts and coffee and juice will be provided.
Hey, there you go. Mr. Schilling.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Tiftrington. In our last meeting, I think you'd mentioned that we were, the city is interested in either painting or paying to paint part of a building in downtown Troy.
I don't know that I've mentioned anything. I know we have on our schedule to touch up the mural behind Pride Plaza. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Yeah. How did that come to our attention that we needed to do that? Was that, I mean, I know we have some people go around and you know, look at the tall grass and the buildings that are in disrepair, and I think, was it brought to your attention through that channel, or how did we decide that we wanted to take a look at this?
No, we have repainted that a couple of times since it was first created. We keep an eye on it. I'm not sure if I mentioned it to staff, staff mentioned it to me, somebody else mentioned it to us. I really can't tell you how that happened, but we do, I mean, it is on Pride Plaza, that is a very active area. So it's not out of sight, out of mind, and we've noticed over the last couple of years that it had been flaking and fading.
City doesn't have any ownership in that building, right?
We do not. That is part of the Mayflower.
And the owners, have we talked to the owner about this? The owners are okay with this?
We have in the past, and we are reaching out just to make sure. I believe that there's been contact made before. But before we do anything, we would make sure we have their permission to.
Building owner wanted to paint something else, or they could do that, right?
They would have to go to the planning commission as part of architectural review, design review.
Does this have to go through the historical district as far as their approval on this program, and does this thing meet the standards of what they do for the other buildings?
So it's in the historic district. There's not a body that, historic district body, there is a design review set of responsibilities that were given to the planning commission in lieu of having a separate architectural review board, which we had 15, 20 years ago. There is no review by the planning commission if they're simply repainting what's already there.
Okay. Has anybody done a structural review of this building? I, the reason I said it, I've done it on Friday, looking at it, and up at the top, some of the bricks are, look like they're bubble. You know, you have all these flat bricks, but you look up top and there's some bricks that are bubbled. I don't know what that is. And then the other thing, you look at the side of the building, it looks like it's bow, it's beginning to bow. Has anybody done a structural review on this before we get into painting this thing?
That would be the responsibility of the property owner, probably as part of their insurance coverage. And I can't tell you if they've done that or not. I know that we've not noticed, nor has it been brought to our attention that there's any danger to the building. We can certainly ask the property owners if they've done that.
And then the other thing, since this is you know, I know the city has worked very hard in trying to promote the downtown and encourage growth in the downtown, and we've had some projects that haven't gone according to what the plan was. But my question is on that, has anybody ever done an economic study on the park in front of that building as far as what would be the best use for that particular piece of land?
Probably the most recent comments that were made on that property were part of the downtown riverfront study that was done several years ago. It was not done as a financial feasibility study. You know, it was not targeted for redevelopment or putting a building, building a building on that property since it is Pride Plaza.
So that was, my understanding was Pride Plaza was excluded from that economic study, and other due was, the city said that's going to be a park no matter what.
The preference from focus groups that were engaged was to not change that property. Procedurally, if it were to be considered, the park board. Procedurally, if it were to be considered, the park board would make a recommendation to the city council to declare that property surplus, and the council then would have the opportunity to declare it surplus and put it up for, authorize me to put it up for sale.
If all the effort we're making to improve the downtown would just be something that we should be taking a look at?
That would be a question for, for the council members. I'm not going to weigh in on that one.
I'll weigh in on it. I like Pride Plaza.
I'll weigh in. I would be opposed to any.
Any other comments or questions from council members? Seeing none, any comments or questions from city staff? Now it's time for general audience comments. If you wish to address council on any item, you're invited to do so. Just come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume on any topic you wish to talk about.